Kind of delved into and further investigated.
Yeah, can you talk about our first option?
The first option we looked at was late start, early dismissal. Many of you are probably familiar with the Lamont High School PLC days. They have a late start on Wednesday mornings. This would be similar to that, whether it was on a weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly basis. Our students would start 45 minutes later, or 60 minutes later, or at the end of the day leave 45 to 60 minutes early. So we took a look at that, and that would be time for collaboration. The pros of that approach would be, it's frequent, it's ongoing, so people who would have to collaborate would have that ongoing time to do that, aligning with the high school model, and it provides the desired collaboration time we're looking for. However, the biggest con, and this is the one, especially being an open with the little ones, if we should be, let's say we chose a morning like high school, then that would be time taken up every morning here and there at the time. If you did afternoon, obviously the same would occur with the afternoon. If we did alternating, I think it would be, oh, bigger headaches trying to keep track of what day it was, and that sort of thing. So it's also the ultimate loss of more instructional time.
No, yes, I'm sorry.
There was more instructional time, a loss of 12 to 34 hours instructional time. And as you said, just rotating, you know, this weekend's morning and next week's afternoon, it would be very, very difficult to keep track of that for parents. So we had more cons with that. Disrupts parents' work schedules on a frequent basis, provides limited time for sustained work. It sounds like a lot of time, but the time you get your group together, and you're working on collaborating, planning a unit of literacy lessons, your math lessons, the time you sit organized, you've got your coworkers with you, and you've got your materials together, you've talked for 15 minutes, and you've got your team, now it's time to pack up your things, you get back to your classes, and buses are arriving, and the kids are coming in. So 45 minutes might sound like a lot of time. When you have 45 minutes to teach, it's a planned time, it goes by very quickly, and especially when you're trying to collaborate with your colleagues, that 45 minutes doesn't seem very long at all. It might impact in non-public schools transportation more frequently, and it creates more frequent opportunities for students to potentially be out in the community. So we can see the students leaving early at the end of the day on a sort of day every week, wherever they're going, they could be out in the community visiting.
Visiting. Doug is going to talk about our second option.
Second option we talked about were doing half-days. Our community is used to half-days, so you know what they look like. Our half-days occur because ISBE allows us to bank some time during our calendar year, so you have to bank so much time to earn a half a day. So we did look at the half-days as one of our options. The next slide is our pros. This does save a lot of money, it reduces the number of subs per grade level. When we dismiss our kids for a half a day, that is time that the teachers can get together to collaborate. If we didn't, and we still wanted to give the teacher the same amount of collaboration time, you can see what the cost is for substitute teachers, it would be a little over $16,000. This also saves the cost for paying teachers to complete collaboration projects during the summer. If you take a look at the cost savings, that's approximately $30,000 that it would cost to give our teachers the same amount of time during the summer to collaborate, because if they come in during the summer, we would pay them for their time. It provides opportunity for more extensive collaboration time, which will result in more productivity, and it occurs at relevant times throughout the year, and that has a positive impact on our instruction. And what we mean by that last bullet is because you bank the time, you take your half-days in increments of, let's say, like every other month, and that allows our teachers to be working together in groups during the year at times that really matter, because they can work on things that they are doing directly in their classroom at the time. Some more pros. It ensures that morning and afternoon kindergarten have an equal number of attendance days. My friend Danny next to me would be very happy with that. For example, if we did six half-days, three of those days could be AM kindergarten, and three of those days could be PM kindergarten, and that allows for equal impact to kindergarten classes. It limits disruption to parents' work schedules. And we mean this in comparison to like an early dismissal, late start. An early dismissal, late start to get the same amount of time would probably happen on an every other week basis when we looked at time. This would only happen roughly six times a year. So when you're a parent and you're looking at your work schedule to be interrupted six times during the year, as opposed to every other week, we thought that that was a benefit to our parents. It uses half-day schedule, which is already current practice. Our community understands this, we know it. There are probably, our homes in our community probably already have plans in place for half-day, so we thought it would be less disruptive. And it offers potentially easier childcare schedules compared to an early start late. We just thought with the other option, it might be a little bit harder to find 45 minutes to an hour every other week than just a couple of half-days during the school year. And Mary is going to talk about our cons.
There are a few cons to go along with this. It does, because we are taking three additional half-days, it would decrease the total instruction time by about nine hours throughout the year. It does require some specialized scheduling for some after-school activities that we have ongoing throughout the year on the half-days. And again, it does result in a few larger blocks of time for our students to be out and about in our community.
Hey, Joanna is going to talk about the third option we considered.
The last option that we talked about was hiring additional certified or other staff. And if we were to do that, that would allow for more planned time and collaboration time during the day, because the teachers would be allowed breaks as their students went to any of these other classes. But as we started working through that and thinking about it, we realized that it was a more complex option than we originally thought, because there were so many external things that we had no control over. So with that being said, we do recognize and trust that the Board of Education and the administrative team continually strive to consider planned time and collaboration time when hiring new staff and designing the master schedule for each school.
Michelle, I really join Michelle in this, this is our committee's recommendation.
It's our recommendation that we add three half-days for collaboration, so a total of six half-days during the school year. They'd be scheduled in accordance with ISBE calendar regulations, scheduled primarily on Fridays, which is going to limit the impact on after-school academic activities and sports and clubs, and it also provides opportunities for extended family weekends without students missing school, because it's a half-day situation versus where they're not going to be able to.
And so as an evaluation and follow-up, we would certainly inform the board and parents about collaboration work, because that's important to note. We are going to say students are not going to be in school, and the parents and the community should expect something in return. That would be the tasks and products that we would explain. We would monitor student attendance on half-days. We talked about Friday a lot. We did talk about which day to do, and for the two reasons that Michelle explained, we believe that's the right day to use, but we'll monitor that for attendance to see if it has a negative impact on Friday attendance. And then we would reconvene the committee about a year from now, in early 2015, to evaluate the implementation. Do you have any questions?
I do want to remind the board that it is amazing when you sit in on a committee, because all the different opinions and the different questions, and I know you guys hear from your friends too, but it has all been thought about. It's all in there. If you have any questions, please go to any of our principals, go to Mary. They do know all the answers, I have to honestly say, because they've heard it before, they've seen it before, they've thought of it before us. I mean, it is, I know David's sitting there with me, we heard a lot of different things, but they all hear themselves. So please, if you have any questions, we're not voting on this tonight, we're voting on it next month.
Yes.
But please, in the interim, please go talk to somebody, because I'm telling you, you do learn a lot.
We have a question about, you said you were going to monitor Fridays and find out what, you know, what if you found out that there was a negative impact on Fridays?
We would look at a different day of the week, because we really went back and forth. We didn't want, for the two reasons we talked about, the academic activities, like we have tutoring, title on tutoring, we don't have those things on Fridays, so that's why it's a good day. If we found that it was a negative impact, we would look at moving it to another day of the week. Potentially Monday, we talked about as a second, you know, it's not the greatest because of the holidays, but we would look at other days.
And then five-day after-school activities. Because a lot of the teachers who are covering there are coaches there, are, you know.
So it wouldn't affect that as much. And we did ask a couple of the other districts that do this, and they also, Friday for the reasons that we indicated. It also gives families who would like to travel, rather than on a random weekend taking the Friday off, at least it gives another couple of opportunities to do that.
What are your thoughts on the nine hours of lost instruction time?
Well, we need to do the work, so that's either happening, teachers are coming out of the classroom, and we're getting subs. And so while we value our subs, and we're very proud of our subs, they do good work, they're not the classroom teachers. And so, you know, it's not, we're doing that right now. There is that amount of work that has to happen, and so.
I highly recommend that you call Mary or Doug, Kathy, Bill, call one of them and have this conversation, because I'm telling you, everything has been thought of, and I was very pleased with the whole process. That's definitely, you know, the balance is, we have to do the planning. That's going to happen somewhere or another. But just in touch, just in any time we have standards.
We used to have it, now we don't have it anymore. We're trying to find a halfway, we're trying to find something to give something back to our teachers. So, I'm sorry.
Just one question now, I want to sit down with you. Do you ever consider that six half-days or three full-days off?
The calendar doesn't provide for that. We take as many full days as we can. It still counts as a full, as an attendance day.
Right. But you're saying combined two half-days and one day at PM? No, the calendar allows you to take half-days.
Yeah, that's a good question for Bill Karen, because he's had the calendar.
And I can wait for the rest.
No, I'm just, I'm talking my board members to the right people, right? But if you have questions, we're going to.
I'd rather do that anyways, and we sit down.
Sure.
But there was one question I had.
Okay. Once again, this is just the presentation, we're going to vote on it next month, but please, in the meantime, ask all the questions you can, because I know they have all the answers.
When's the calendar committee coming up for implementation?
Right now, right now.
That's what I'm saying. So does this mean that this doesn't get incorporated into next year, or is there?
The calendar will also.
You'll find out in the next month as well.
Yeah.
This is just the preview.
This is the recommendations. Today's preview.
So can you go on?
Yes, you can go on.
Okay. I'm sorry, guys, I just, you know. I have update.
I think there are other questions, we're all here.
Yeah.
We're all here.
I feel bad, but our job is kind of long. Okay. Moving on, we got the calendar committee, your bill. Thank you. Do you want to take the hot seat, Bill, or?
There's, no, and I think there's a couple other members here that, you know, feel free to stand up.
Okay, here they are.
Mike and Dave, we're also members of the calendar committee, and the calendar committee, we have some, you know, particular things that we have to do with the committee. You have a draft of the calendar. Part of what we did this year was things that we do every year. First thing we do is we communicate with Lamont High School to find out what their calendar looks like, or what they're looking to do with their calendar. And we always align it to Lamont High School as far as spring break and winter break. We try to keep the days off. As a matter of fact, this year Lamont High School did adopt their calendar, and they adopted a piece of their calendar that we've had, where they'll be in session next year on Plasky Day. We've been in session for several years on Plasky Day, and they thought that was a great idea, so next year they're going to be in session on Plasky Day, same as us. So it's a back and forth between us and the, and the high school as far as aligning our calendars. We do have, like I said, the similar days. We did put in the draft calendar, the three additional half-days. If it is approved by the board next month, if it is not approved by the board next month, then we would simply pull those three half-days out, and those would be full-attendance days, okay? We did look at the half-days being kind of natural breaks. We looked at those half-days being on Halloween, which has been a very popular day with our parents. We have parents on the committee, teachers on the committees, administrators on the committees, board members on the committees. We got feedback from parents in the community. Our parents went out and talked to their colleagues, and said that they liked fall break, they want to continue fall break, they like the idea of doing half-days on Fridays, typically like on Halloween, because it gives them an opportunity to do things with their kids on, you know, that day. We did look at it on the day before winter break, and the day before spring break, and the day before Valentine's. And I know that the elementaries are very happy about that, because those are party days. So they're happy that they can do some special things with the students on those half-days, along with the planning and collaboration that we would do in association with those school improvement days. We are only allowed a certain number of institute days. We have those days pretty much the similar to what we've had in the past. The days that we have. We have the one day in August, which is the first day for all the staff to come back. We did push that on the recommendation of the parents, we did, and staff to the middle of the week. A lot of parents and staff felt, the feedback that we got was, they really liked the idea of moving it more towards the middle of the week to a start. The high school does a middle-of-the-week start. They start on the 13th next year, freshman on the 12th, everybody else on the 13th. And so we kind of followed suit with them there. We also felt that if, with that pushes the end of the year back to about the middle of the week, so that if we do have any inclement weather days, maybe we can keep it within the one week, rather than going, this was an unusual year. I will tell you, the almost 30 years I've been in education, I personally never had forced snow. So this has been a very unusual day as far as weather, and we don't anticipate that again, but you never know. There's nothing unusual in the calendar other than the additional SIP days. We didn't change anything dramatically. The one thing that though, that I should say did change was the, when spring break would be taken, we aligned with the high school, because the park testing, which starts next year, both the high school and us at the elementary level. In order for us to be able to maximize the number of days that were allowed for the testing, we did push that back to the first full week of April, which aligns with actually the same week as what would be Easter of next year. So other than that, the calendar actually fell in place very quickly. It fell in place very neatly. It fell in place with the high school, a lot very well with the high school. And the feedback we got from parents and staff, and from our community, was very positive. So that's the draft, take a look at it, and I know it's coming back next month.
We've got that much.
Question right now?
Okay. I do like the way that these half-days, they seem to really be tagged on, there seems to help. It's like this weekend, it looks like, so it's kind of. Okay, see, transformational results. Take away Barn. A question for you, we're proceeding several documents, one of them is a very large spreadsheet. Thank you for putting this up, Tim. This is a summation of all of our past different expenses for the last two years, and projected, current budget projected for the next three years, compared to the two vendors that submitted bids to the district. Now, I'm, we're going to, I've summarized this information on a presentation, so you don't have to try and read this here, but you can have Sandy get the presentation up, and then we'll go through that. I'll just talk about what our process was. Initially, the board directed us in November to go out and place a bid for transportation. So on January 2nd, we made those bids available to the public, and the bids were due on the 21st. During that time, we had a pre-bid meeting, we had seven vendors show up at the meeting, but only two of the vendors submitted bids to the district. So those were what were submitted to us on the 21st. And then tonight, I did give you an initial presentation, and I'm sure we'll talk about it some more in the next few weeks. And then on April 23rd, we are public hearing, a potential motion on outsourcing transportation, and we'll put employees in that scenario. So this slide summarizes the information that's in great detail on the spreadsheet. This is the financial impact, the district's cost for student, who was one of the vendors that submitted a bid, as well as Westway. Total costs for 2015-16 for our district. And remember, this is only the cost for regular transportation. This does not include our specialized transportation. So if you're looking at this and you notice it doesn't match our budget, that's why it wouldn't match our budget exactly, is because I don't get the specialized numbers in here. We already have a contract for that in place. So district costs for 15-16, we estimate to be at 1.06 million. For students, is estimated to be at about 1.03 million. And Westway Coach at 1.09 million. Any savings involved in that, I asked with first student, there would be a 3% savings with Westway Coach, not for that year. Total cost for 16-17, we're estimating our cost to be 1.171 million. And I'll explain why that jumps up in 2016-17 the way it does. For 2016-17, we actually just got new information on the healthcare reform legislation. And originally, we were going to have to start to offer health insurance to an employee who worked over 30 hours effective January 2015. So we thought we were going to have those costs next year, but actually that's not going to take effect until January 2016. So that's why you're seeing those costs jump up for us in the fiscal year 2016-17. So our cost would be 1.171 million. For a student is about 1.04 million. That's a savings of 10% to us. And Westway Coach, 1.125 million with a savings of 4%. And our total cost for 17-18, we're estimating to be 1.218 million. For a student is approximately 1.064 million with a savings of 13%, and Westway Coach at 1.159 million, savings of 5% to the district. So what does this mean for us in dollars? In 15-16, there's a savings of $33,007,18 for first student. The next year, $122,000. 17-18, $154,000 for total savings. Over three years of $310,000. And with Westway, we wouldn't have savings in their first year, but in 16-17, savings of $45,000, almost $46,000. And in 17-18, the savings of $59,000 for overall savings of $105,000 over three years.
I see some little bar, in the first year, it looked like we actually were paying $26,000.
We are, we are.
Is that included in 105, or?
No, it's not. It's not. There's no, this is.
Like $79,000.
So it's next step. Here's a comparison of the benefits that are offered, district, first student, and Westway. Our hourly rate, our starting hourly rate is now $14.43. First student has indicated that they honor all the current district benefits and rates of pay. So their rates would be lesser with what the district is paying. Westway Coach starts their employees with no experience at 12:50 an hour, but also indicated they will honor the current driver rates of pay that they are currently making as well. Paid holidays, district gets 10. First student indicated they would offer the same as the district, 10 holidays, and Westway offers seven. Personal days, district offers two. First student indicated they would do the same, so that would be two personal days, and Westway does not offer personal days, they indicated that in their bid document. Health insurance, we do not offer it in 2015-16 to the drivers. In 2016-17, it would be offered in January of that year to anyone who works over 30 hours. Oh, yeah. And then health insurance, that first student is not available, but at Westway Coach, they do offer health insurance to their employees. Dental PTO or HMO, we don't offer that at this time. First student does not offer it, and Westway Coach offers it, but it's 100% employee cost. Vision insurance, we offer at 100% employee cost. First student would operate at 100%, and Westway will, because it is 100%. Our life insurance is currently $35,000. First student indicated that they would match that at $35,000, and Westway Coach's current life insurance is $15,000. We don't offer a safety bonus or an attendance bonus. Both companies indicated that they offer those to their employees. And then retirement, currently we have IMRF for these employees. The rate for 2014 is 11.57%. First student doesn't have retirement per se, because they cannot contribute to IMRF, but what they do is they make their contribution through unemployment that they offer during the summer months and during times off of their business and services. And then Westway Coach has no retirement contribution to their workers.
I want to ask a question from the slide, the top row. Does, for first student and Westway Coach, does that mean that they will honor the current District 113A hourly rate to all drivers they employ, or to any current district driver who might be employed by them? The second?
The second, what you said, to any current district employee that might be employed.
At the hall? For one, for one year?
I can find that out, I don't, I don't know. I assume they review their employees as they indicated with their bid document on an annual basis, so it will.
Because after the first year, they would not have a 113 hourly rate to manage.
I know, but that would be their, we'll find out, but that would be their starting pay for the board, for the bus company, if you were to choose one of the other companies.
And then, and then do we?
But that would just be their start.
I know, it's just a projection, but would that, they stay at that rate until everyone else caught up, or would they get the rates if there's a reason why else exists?
We have both bus companies here, we can ask them.
And this is.
We can find out.
Okay, we can find out.
We don't want to put you on the spot.
We can find out.
Thanks, buddy.
Okay.
They don't want to.
Once again, this is a presentation today, and we can.
And we knew that there would be questions generated, so that's.
Yeah, absolutely. Have another question, does anybody? This is a summary of some of the professional development that's offered here in our district to our employees. PMD indicated they do a total of 16.5 hours. That's comprised of activities that are done on institute days, safety meetings, and annually there's a two-hour refresher class. So the two-hour refresher class is offered here in the district in conjunction with course plus service, and they do an annual review of protocol, procedures, and mandates. It's about a two-hour session that they do once a year. So on institute day, they do blood work, pathogen training, allergy training, emergency plans are distributed and discussed. Special needs presentation is done by Susan Mulgen for our staff. Discussion of route assignments and bus inspections, and they also go out and do their practice runs that day. And then at safety meetings, they continue, they always have discussing their allergy prevention, seating assignments, and enforcements, and the reasons that we have them. Radios and their usage, winter and spring driving reminders, and also safety procedures in the parking lot. Handling of complaints, requirements of our bus drivers such as wearing seat belts, pre- and post-trip inspections, behavior management, and also the behavior of the bus driver, because the thing needs to do like remaining neutral on issues that are brought up on the bus, as well as always maintaining. First student and Westway Coach both offer a very comprehensive professional development program as well. This is just a small snippet of what they offer. There's, the information they provided was quite extensive. First student does classroom and interactive videos, as well as on-the-road training, basic driving instruction, annual in-service meetings, post-collision and incident reporting, evaluation enhancement training, as well as new employees completing. complete a minimum of a 43-hour program before they're put out on an account. So that's, that's one feature that they do. Westway Coach holds annual safety meetings where they discuss prompt events, weapons and evacuation drills, safety vests and wheelchair usage, railroad crossings and procedures that should be, procedures they should use in railroad crossings, winter and spring, weather safety, pre-trip inspections, crisis planning, bus failure, as well as regular training. So they all cover pretty much the same thing, it seems. They all do about 17 hours on an annual basis, so. Both Westway and First Student have a proposed transition plan for current staff and also to maintain continuity with our transportation program. They all do employee relations and training assistance as well as, both indicated they would offer recruiting assistance. As far as the maintenance facility usage goes, First Student has indicated that they will use the maintenance facility and our telephone system. They will not fuel our buses here. They will fuel them at their facility, which is three miles away from here. And Westway has indicated that they would park the buses on the district property but would not use the maintenance building. So both, both vendors have indicated the buses would be here. The employees would come here to get their buses. And the way they would not have to go to a facility probably from there to get their buses. First Student, as far as the buses and the age of First Student, will utilize 11 new type-C buses and a mixture of existing units in the first year of the contract. And they indicated that their goal is to exceed our expectations. Westway has pleaded over 125 buses, buses of age, bus age ranges from 2004 to 2015. They also indicated that they will be buying a lack of buses shortly after, in the summer. So I'm sure someone could use this, which is not true.